Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for May 24th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Legion.
Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission's agenda for an item not listed. I don't see anybody, nobody has signed in, so move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Got a second? Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorization, approval of the human services report. I'd look for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a second? Further discussion?
I just would like, I think Dan was going to say something about the human services report. There were a couple of mental health issues on there that maybe are a little different than what we normally say. I'm not asking that it come off the consent agenda, but maybe an explanation of how we're reporting differently.
Yeah, so those mental health items on that welfare report are not coming out of the welfare budget. They're coming out of the the mental health budget. When the hospital has these notices of discharge and some of these other things like avera behavioral health, those claims end up getting submitted to the welfare office. And so we've chosen to put them on the welfare report, but moving forward, I talked to Commissioner Pierce. We'll create a separate report outlining specifically the mental health claims rather than putting them on the welfare, just so there's no confusion there. But yes, they are getting paid out of a different budget.
And am I right, Dan, that that bill that was like $2,100, that was down at avera behavioral health as opposed to the human services center in Yankton?
Correct.
Was the human services center full, is that what the deal was?
Yes, and part of it too is if it's a non-custody IVC, meaning that there's no criminal component to it, usually the preference is to send them to avera behavioral health because avera behavioral health doesn't accept individuals that are being charged criminally, is that correct, Marty? And so in these IVC situations where there's not an arrest, usually they go to avera behavioral, whereas HSC is willing to take an IVC if there's a criminal component to it as well.
So in the past, the county, if there was room at H, down in Yankton, okay, if there was room there, we didn't allow people to pick Sioux Falls instead of Yankton because of the cost. Are people making that choice themselves then, or how's that?
No, it's availability too.
Okay.
I mean, HSC, as you know, is usually operating at maximum capacity, so.
All right, any further comments or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six on the agenda, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion on the claims.
There was a handout this morning. There were a couple additional claims that I think got added in later, were changed kind of late after the packet was published. That handout was in front of you.
Comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, department head reports. We will start with Misty so she can take off and get back out spraying. That was requested by her, by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good morning.
Morning.
So just a quick update, I want to let you know that our budget line, our overall budget is good. But just wanted to let you know that 4260 was in the negative. Truck repairs that we did in the amount of $5,000. I've essentially got that changed so that when repairs come in from the highway department, that they come out of line, 4250.
Misty, can you pull your, the microphone down a little bit, so it's more, thank you.
Can you hear me better now? Sorry. Just wanted to let you know that overall budget is still okay. And with the chemical line, that's going to be, also, we're going to be over budget on that this year. Is there any questions on the budget? Okay. We have our crew out, we're spot spraying Spurge, we're seeing thistle out there, but we can't see that from the trucks yet. It's not quite tall enough, so we're still spot spraying with the four-wheelers and the Kubota. And we're also hitting the brush that the highway department has cut. We have little saplings coming back, so we're trying to keep up with that also. Also, I just want to let you know on June 9th, we have a good, bad, ugly, well, similar looking weed plant tour, and that's up at Leola, South Dakota. So on June 9th, I have put a travel request in. On June 9th, I will be traveling up there. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Bob.
Good morning.
Morning.
We had a slight storm come through. And earlier that day, they, on May 12th, Thursday, they issued a tornado watch for the area. And then, of course, we started monitoring stuff. We was doing real good in the office, in the building. We had a tornado shelter, or severe weather shelter open. We was tracking the storm real good. It turned dark as it could be outside, and then the power went out. So much for well-laid plans. But we had, in the after-action review, we'll take a look at some of the stuff. But we lost power for over 28 hours in the city of Brookings. County personnel, we, they opened an emergency operations center up over at the East Fire Station, which is also the county emergency operations center. And we basically ran that as a joint operation. The city was doing their stuff, and I was, me and Commissioner Borisima and Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner Krogman went to that facility and basically worked out of that facility as needed. And I had staff back here in this office, in this building, taking calls from the county side of the house. And of course, on May 13, starting May 12th, the highway department did an excellent job opening as many roads as possible. One of the issues they had was power lines down. It's, you know, what are you going to do if you're driving a vehicle and there's a power line down and you don't know it's energized? You're definitely not going to run over it. So they had their hands full also on the 13th, and they continued on. And on the 13th, we basically started a recovery phase, and it will be long-term. County Equalization Office, they went out Friday and started doing assessments for me, and they're still continuing on. And we had to turn all of our assessments in on Friday to the Office of Emergency Management so they can compile them and get them to the governor's office. And at that level, they'll make a determina, excuse me, determination for disaster. But all the other county offices provided support as needed. We worked with the 2-1-1 Center to ensure, to ensure that the public and citizens had a place to call and report their damage assessment. 2-1-1 has got the formatted forms and the operators to take calls and ask the right questions. That's why we focus them towards 2-1-1. The American Red Cross also did damage assessment for us. They sent that paperwork. There's one VOAD, volunteer organizations active in disasters named Samaritan, Samaritan Spurs. They're operating in Brookings County. The Red Cross trailer was deployed to Madison at the request of the American Red Cross. We did not have a need to open a shelter. We had, I want to say probably two people contacted the Red Cross for sheltering assistance. Madison had a trailer park that was destroyed, so the decision was made to open a shelter up in Madison. Brookings, they determined did not have a need. We had enough hotel rooms in the town, although no power, it'd be kind of hard to get into them. Contact, of course, was made with the National Weather Service from day one. And we sent what photographs we had. And I can say that the citizens of Brookings County assisted me in that. They allowed me to share their photographs with the National Weather Service so we could show people what we had. And later in today's meeting, we're going to talk about rescinding the burn ban. One thing we do need to discuss is the building permit process. And there's a lot of buildings down. From what I can tell from our damage assessment, there's a lot more. There's a lot of roof damage, which we don't typically give building permits for roofs in Brookings County. So that's, that's not necessary. But where we've got a lot of damage is going to be our outbuildings. And I guess we are looking for guidance from the county commission on, do we want to try to give a discount on building permits? Or, or what's the thought of the county commission on that?
I think that's on the agenda for later, Bob.
Oh, is it later too?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll do that later. Let me go back to the other page. All right. I'm working on a drainage inquiry that we received yesterday. Tomorrow, I'll do some more research and get back to them. They had a stormwater committee canceled today. Tomorrow, I'm running up to New Brook School in White to do a safety inspection. On Thursday, Department of Public Safety Deputy Secretary Dan Lust, Office of Emergency Management Director Tina Tietzey, and Public Assistance Coordinator Amanda Vander Platts will be visiting my office at 4:00. If any commissioner wants to swing by and talk to them, they're stopping by to see what, how the response is and if they can provide any assistance to us. And they'll be here about 4:00. They're going up to Cottington County first, stopping back in the Castlewood and talk to Dave Schaefer out of Hamlin County, and then come into Brookings.
What date and time was that?
4:00 on Thursday.
On Thursday, yeah.
What I plan on doing is, I got a large map in my office. I'm going to, once I get equalizations numbers, I'm going to put dots on the map to show how widespread the damage was in Brookings County. And that's all I have at this time. We've got Platts and everything else coming up. I will be stepping out from 9:30 to 9:45 to go on the radio, but other than that, I'll be back in my chair. Yes, ma'am.
Bob, on those assessments that are being done, is that just damages that are outside municipalities that you want called into 2-1-1? Or is it in municipalities as well as out in the county?
Anything within Brookings County is going to be counted towards our damage assessment, ma'am.
Including the municipality?
By all means.
Okay. And then what is it that's going to be done with assessments?
We will, we have to sort out the assessments between regular buildings, outbuildings, because those won't count. What we have to do is go through all the data and any of the residences that's damaged. We're going to report those to Pier to see if there's enough for what's known as individual assistance. Individual assistance is extremely hard to get, and you've got to have a high-value dollar damage. And so that's why, that's why we're asking for the assistance from the public. Tell us what you've got, and all we can do is assemble the information, send it forward, and they take a look at it. The public, the public assistance is separate. That's when you talk about our infrastructure and all that. We've, we've had so many power lines down, it's not going to be difficult. I don't think to get public assistance for the government. But, but the reason for 2-1-1 and why we're requesting people to call in is to try to get individual assistance.
I had somebody call and ask me that, and I said I did not know if there would be individual.
And once again, there's no, we're not making promises that we're ever going to get individual assistance. A lot of people's asking for help, and we understand that. And all we can do is try and assemble the paperwork and ship it on and go from there.
So I was out of state when the storm happened, so I don't know the answer to this question. Did we use iPaws?
We did not.
Okay.
The reason for that is, when I started the meeting off, what statement did I make? That we was in a tornado watch. At no time did Brookings County, was there a tornado warning issue? So.
So we're only using iPaws for tornado warnings, we're not using it for?
Typically, a tornado warning, or if the National Weather Service sends out a statement of severity. They've got a statement that talks about severity. And even then, but by the time I would be able to set up iPaws, the National Weather Service would force out their own iPaws on top of me. Because they've got that capability also. And the big reason, not to interrupt you, but the big reason we got iPaws also is for severe weather and blizzard warnings. And we typically use it for blizzard warnings and stuff like that in the wintertime. But we also have it for our local emergency planning committee and hazardous materials. If there's ever a hazardous material spill, that's where iPaws, I can circle, I can circle a spot on a map, whether it's a small town or a whatever, and we can send out a dedicated message to that area.
It would just seem to me that maybe we ought to be reassessing our policy on that, that this would have been the type of event that we should have been sending an alert out to all of our citizens on through iPaws. And do I remember right, that comes across everybody's cell phone as a text message then?
Unless they opt out of it.
Yeah, unless they opted out. It just, that seems to me like this event was the perfect event for us to use our iPaws. And I understand what you're saying, Bob, but yeah.
Yeah, but, well, okay, I'm not, I'm not going to argue with you by any stretch without, the way the system formed, and you can look on the radars, the way the system formed, it, by the time we realized what it was and everything turned black on us, we lost power, and I couldn't have sent iPaws out anyway.
Yeah, I get it.
So.
Thank you.
I mean, we balance the best we can, that's all I can do. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Brian?
Well, the construction season's getting to be here in full. I've had quite a few meetings with other governments in regards to their projects. A few, few meetings for our bridges. Kind of on a standstill on the Sinai Bridge. Couple of highlights in my report. We've began our asphalt patching on our chip seal routes. I attended the groundbreaking for the 20th Street Interchange Project. Aside from that, I'm going to go right into the storm. I've got a, a map kind of highlighting here. I don't know if we can pull that up. Or where I got to put that. But I also have an updated map. We're about, I would say roughly 60% done. We kind of started on the south side of the county and we're working our way north. Basically, we got everything south of 14 kind of cleaned up with, that's down trees in the right of way. You can kind of see some areas are more concentrated than others. But we are continuing to work on that. The night of the storm, we lost two buildings. The east shed of the main shop ended up in Pioneer Park. And the brew shop was downed onto the motor grader. We're completed with the cleanup in the Pioneer Park and dang near all the way to 14. We got, we had a lot of tin blow off our sheds and end up in the alleyways and city, city lot there. We got that cleaned up on Monday. Our brew shop, actually, today, we are working on trying to extract our motor grader out of that shed. We got a plan put together. We got prusmen contracting helping us out along with our equipment. So after I leave here, that's where I'm heading to see if we can't get that motor grader out before it rains. So that was kind of the wrap of that. We, the night of the storm, the crews were out. We had four loaders kind of cover four quadrants of the county. Started about 6:00, and the guys were leaving about 11:00. The next morning, we came in and we fixed all the, the main signs, the stop signs, to get them back up. And then we came in Monday and began the removal process. Met with safety benefits last week. Kind of went and looked at all of our shops, still waiting to hear from the adjusters. I've had a few, or one contractor already stopped by and looked at the roof on the main shop. We lost, I would say, probably maybe a third of the roof foam. So when it rains outside, it's raining inside. Kind of tried to plug some of that stuff up. I was up on the roof last Wednesday. But there's, it's pretty extensive damage. The, the wind actually peeled back the roofing membrane on a fairly large chunk on the south side. Kind of unplugged everything and shut the breakers off in the areas that, that were affected there. But got a contractor also going to look at the east wall of the, of the Sinai Building. That wall is separated from the roof. I don't know if we can fix that or not, but going to have somebody that maybe knows a little more about construction than I do to take a look at it to see if we can't salvage what we got. And that's about all I got.
I don't know the answer to this, and maybe Stacy does. Our insurance that we carry on those. Is that?
He stated it was replacement value.
Is it replacement?
I believe so. I know we've got claims submitted, but they're so backed up to, I don't know that they've been here, but we've got our claims submitted for them, for them.
And the representative I met with, Todd.
Todd.
He's the owner of the safety benefits. So he kind of gave me a few pointers on what to do or, you know, what to take pictures of as far as that goes and the documentation that we need to do. I, I got the forms filled out, and, and he took a gander over them to, to make sure they had the information they needed. And like, like we said, it's been submitted to the claims associates, just waiting to hear from the adjusters.
But they indicated replacement?
That's, that's what Todd said.
Was there any personal property in, in our sheds that had damage, that got damaged? Thank you.
I was wondering, the motor graders, that covered under safety benefits too? Yes. We don't know the extent of the damage, but we did file a claim. But I couldn't put what was damaged down there yet until we get it out of the building.
All right. We did have some other vehicles in our shed too that belong, I suppose, to the sheriff's department. And I don't know if those are covered or is that under the sheriff's policy?
They've been over to look at the sheriff's vehicles. I'm not sure if it's the same adjuster or not, but they have taken a review with them. I think there was some windows knocked out, is that correct, Marty? And we had, we had several windows. One payloader, two skid loaders, and I believe it was two pickups got windows knocked out from the debris from the building.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Marty?
Morning.
We have a 9:00 too, so I may, I may cut you off.
I'll, I'll be quick.
All right.
Six minutes, quick.
Yep.
Anyway, we have, I'll try, Leon, I'll try. Anyway, right now, we have 29 of our own inmates in jail. I got four from Moody County and one from DOC. So our numbers have stayed, stayed fairly low. We made it through the storm. With, Dave Beitler's quote is seamless. When the lights went out, generators kicked in. Nobody even knew it in the jail. The only time the inmates knew there was a storm out because we lost cable TV. You know, and it wasn't because of the generators, because they lost cable TV. That's the only way they knew there was a storm because they're all asking for their cable TV. So anyway, otherwise, it was seamless. Our big worry was diesel fuel, to make sure we had enough diesel fuel. For the jail is 1,000 gallons. And we topped it off on Friday afternoon, and we'd used like 250. So from, for that 28 hours, we probably used 300 gallons, maybe, out of the big generator. So but, you know, there was, it's, you don't realize a lot of this until something like this happens. You know, I went down to Martin's to make sure we had diesel fuel and to top it off and that. He was struggling getting diesel into his truck because he had no electricity for pumps. So they were doing gravity fill, and that was taking a while. But, and then everybody that had a generator was looking for diesel. So, but we made it through, and, and when everything else was dark, you could see a shine at the sheriff's office. The lights were bright, just like, just like normal anyway, so. What we did also was I had three cars damaged. I had one car damaged over in White, and actually, it was caused by them moving trees. I think the city of White's probably going to pick up the tab for that car. Another car, he's just, he was trying to hunker down somewhere. He's caught in the storm, lost some back windows, and then the side of the car was all peppered. And then the side of the car was all peppered with rocks and stones and things like that. My biggest damage is a pickup at the, at the highway shop and we haven't even got the bill yet on that, but it took most of the windows out and things hit it and there's dents all over it and it's almost, it's gonna be a while before I get that on the road. But that's okay because the, the one that drives that is actually at the academy, so it's, it's, it's working out okay. You know, the night of the storm, we called everybody up. First responders in all the towns. If we didn't have the volunteers in all the towns at the fire departments, we would really be in trouble. But White and Volga and they were going around and they know where their elderly people are and they were checking on homes and things like this. So then that freed my guys up not to have to worry about that type of thing. Ours was mainly downed power lines and then they, we couldn't keep up with downed power lines. And one of the things we couldn't keep up with was barricades because, you know, we're calling the highway department for barricades. They're busy trying to clear roads and, and trying to get barricades and, and the fire department would come out and block roads for us because we had a lot of power lines that were live yet and, and those types of things. So what's great, if there's anything good about this is we had very few injuries. And the injuries we did have was the semi was tipped over on fourteen and had, had minor cuts on him. But otherwise, we didn't have anybody that was damn, you know, hurt in the building and stuff. But a lot of damage everywhere. I mean, the whole county had some damage. It might, some areas had less than others and it was concentrated. A lot of cattle sheds, a lot of cattle got all over the county basically, so. It was, it was a mess for a while. We did about, like, had about thirteen-hundred dollars in overtime on Friday night, which I don't think is too bad. I sent everybody home but two deputies at ten o'clock, which were on shift because, and I told them, you know, just calls for service. Don't go out on any township roads and at this point, until we got daylight, because we didn't know if there's what we got for downed power lines and so forth, so. I didn't get electricity till that following Monday, so I, I took a couple of cold showers in between times, so. Definitely gonna look into a generator. Unless you guys have any other questions. We did, our, our biggest problem was gas. We, you know, the gas pumps are down. We did have to, Deputy Langstrat got ahold of his neighbor and we, we bought sixty gallons of gas from a farmer. And we'll, we'll pay him back and so forth. I did learn though Friday is that the street department has a generator. They had their gas pumps for the city police cars and I didn't know that. But at the nine-one-one meeting, I did ask the city manager if we could jump on board with that. And he said, as long as they got gas for them first. I think Ryan was, was there with that. So we could. What, Volga got gas first, but they had so many lines. We actually had to send a car over there to keep, because they were starting to get out on fourteen and, and creating a traffic problem. So we had to go over there and reg, and direct traffic and so forth because of the gas lines and so forth. Probably the best business Friday night or late Thursday, or Thursday evening and Friday was the taco truck at the Dollar General store. That, that place had a generator and they were saying selling tacos to beat the ban over there. So it's about the only place you could buy food. So anyway. Any questions? Okay. Otherwise, I commend our local, our, our, our fire department and the highway shop was overwhelmed with, with getting trees off the road. And so we're, you know, what's, we can, we're gonna go back and assess some things, you know, how do we get barricades out to these roads and things like that? And there's a couple of us that have pickups, you know, maybe I need to go get the trailer and, and start putting barricades up if I got enough people out. So we're, we're, we're gonna do some, I have a, a planning session with my department tomorrow actually, so we're gonna talk about some of this stuff.
Marty, are you generally buying gas? Or are you getting it at the highway department?
Highway department, yeah.
So maybe down the road, we need to put in our back pocket, think about a generator to be able to do that.
And we did discuss it. I talked with Mike, excuse me, Commissioner Bartley about we may need just a generator just for the gas pump. I don't know. But those are some things we can talk about, like, you know, hopefully we'll never have a storm to this, like this again, where it takes out so much stuff. But you, you know, to have the lights out for a period of time, it's, you know, I talked to a few parents that had kids and you know, they said, take their board games out. They go, board games? What are board games? Because they're used to their iPods and all this stuff. So this is interesting. Thank you.
Thanks Marty. All right, we have a scheduled is the second reading, public hearing and an action to approve ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-two and ordinance providing the amendment of ordinance twenty-eighteen dash zero-three. This is a second reading, so I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Okay. We will open this as a public hearing to all proponents who would like to speak to this, all proponents. Okay, all opponents that would like to speak to the ordinance, all opponents. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion. Any comments, discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we will go back to our department head reports. Lori, finance officers report please.
Okay, you have your April and March finance office report. And also in your packet today news, those have been paid out. Division Motor Vehicles in Pier. We learned that they have decided to cancel their new system, so we are excited about that. They are having a hard time, like everybody, with keeping employees and programmers. So they're going to study some other states and try to pick up a program from another state that is working. So that was kinda good news. New plates come out in January. They look pretty much like the plates we have now. Delinquent letters and reminder letters were sent out to property owners that didn't pay their first half property taxes before April thirtieth. Interest does increase at point eight-three-three percent a month. And election season is officially underway in the office. Early voting is available on first floor of the city county building. And we're very lucky to have the return staff that we do. They're very good. Sample ballots will be posted on first floor in the building. The election takes place on June seventh. In the election process, we invite anyone to come watch that night that would like to. They will not be allowed in the office, but it will be viewable from the lobby or the hallway. We've been working on unclaimed property. These are checks that are written by our office to individuals that have not been cashed. We will eventually turn those over to the South Dakota State Treasurer's Unclaimed Property Division. So if you have a cash, a check out there, please cash it. I had Jennifer Beller attend the spring workshop in Pier at the beginning of May. The main talk was the ARPA program and how counties are going to be using that. Most of the counties are trying to get that into the general budget lines, so it is easier to spend. And then I'll be having Christine attend the deputy workshop in June. That is about the highlights of the office.
Question?
I have a question. On the report that's in the packet, the GL account totals, it says that on account, just a second, I gotta look at my number here. One oh one four, one thirty, forty-two, thirty blood tests, that we're over budget on blood tests. And I'm just curious if anybody knows what's going on with the blood tests that were showing up as being over budget already this year?
I do not.
Do you have any idea?
That would just be nice if somebody could follow up on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks Lori.
Thanks.
All right, Dustin submitted his report for the BCOAC, so that's in the packet. There's the auditors' count with treasurer for March and April, payroll and additive totals for March and April, highway expenditure report for March and April, and register of deed statement of fees collected for March and April. So those are be it noted items under the finance officer's report. We'll move on then. Number eight, regular business. This is a first reading of ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-three and ordinance amending two thousand seven dash two revised subdivision ordinance for Brookings County, South Dakota, providing for the administration enforcement and amendment thereof pursuant to South Dakota codified law eleven dash two and amendments thereof. Whereas the board, the Board of County Commissioners has appointed a county planning commission, hereafter referred to planning commission, to recommend appropriate regulations to be enforced herein. And whereas the planning commission has recommended amendments to the two thousand seven dash two revised subordinates subdivision ordinance pertaining to the Brookings County. Whereas the planning commission has given reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of the subdivision regulations and their suitability. Whereas the planning commission has made preliminary report and submitted it to the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has given due public notice of a hearing related to such and has held such public hearings. And whereas all requirements of South Dakota codified law eleven dash two with regard to the preparation of these revised regulations and subsequent action of the Board of County Commissioners has been met. And whereas the Brookings County, South Dakota Board of County Commission deems it necessary for the purpose of promoting the health, safety and the general welfare of the county to adopt revised subdivision ordinance. Therefore, be it ordained that the two thousand seven revised subdivision ordinance is hereby amended as attached here by the Board of County Commissioners, Brookings, South Dakota. First reading is today. Second reading will be June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. All right. We'll move on to, under regular business, letter B, action to approve resolution twenty-two dash seventeen, a resolution to rescind, rescind the ban, burn ban enacted April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Look for a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, yes sir. Due to wet weather conditions and the need to burn trees, Brookings County Fire Chief Association Chairperson Dave Jacobson contacted my office and requested that we we act the burn ban.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, a plat of tract one in the southeast quarter of section thirty-four, township one twelve north, range forty-eight west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
This was heard in our May regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting approved unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve resolution twenty-two dash nineteen, a plat of lot one of Lucinda Olson addition in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section seventeen, township one twelve north, range forty-nine west, fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Discussion, comments?
Once again, we heard it in the May meeting, approved unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation you approve it.
Comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty, a plat of lots nineteen A and twenty A of DeWitt subdivision being a replat of the south half of lot sixteen and all of lots seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty of DeWitt subdivision of government lots three and four, section thirty-three, township one oh nine north, range fifty west, the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
And once again, we heard it in the May planning and zoning meeting sent to this board with the recommendation you approve it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Bob. Letter F, action to approve abatement twenty-two dash thirty-eight, an abatement application made by Walter Osterberg Junior for parcel twenty-two ninety-nine five dash zero 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 four dash two zero nine dash zero zero in the amount of one hundred, eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion, motion approve.
Discussion, comments? Thing on this, I think both finance and Jacob both approved this. So, all right, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, letter G, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash forty-nine, agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union, number one twenty affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Brookings County Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
We went through the union negotiation process last week and have contracts before you now for both the sheriff, sheriffs and highway departments.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty, an agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union, number one twenty affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Brookings County Highway Department. Is there a motion?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-one, a letter of understanding regarding article twenty-two dash work week and article forty-seven dash wages. Amending agreement number nineteen dash forty-five, an agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union, number one twenty affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Brookings County Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This LOU speaks to two different things. The, there is, the sheriff's department is interested in going to, or having eight, ten and twelve hour shift options. That's where the work week piece comes in, so that speaks to that. And the second part is with wages is a July one of this year increase that was discussed as part of the negotiation process as well. So it just spells out what that looks like for the sheriff's office. And then kinda speaking to the next piece too. The next item is with the highway is just wages because the, the scheduling was specific to sheriff.
Discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letters J, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-two, a letter of understanding regard article thirty-nine dash wages. Amending agreement number nineteen dash forty-four dash an agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union, number one twenty affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and the Brookings County Highway Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
I'd just like to say one thing while we're on this topic. I wanna thank Stacy and Kristen for these last four or five items that we've approved. They did an amazing job in, in making all this come together. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter K, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-three, an application for occupancy of right of way of county highways made by East River Electric Power Cooperative, Inc. in Brookings Township. Is there a motion?
Motion approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
It's underground accompanying one of their overhead line projects.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-four, an application of occupancy of right of way of county highways made by Rick Even in Richland Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
It's a well water crossing on county road thirty-five near the intersection of two twelve or county road thirty-two just north of fourteen. What, can I question, what application is, is he required? I mean, for like our other?
He has to register this with the, the eight-one-one so it can be located as a utility.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's nine fifteen and we have a scheduled agenda item number B, public hearing and action to approve a one-day special events license for Andrea Diedrick, J Street Pub at Bennett Barn for July ninth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Okay, we will open the public hearing for all proponents. All proponents for this? Please state your name and pull the microphone up so we can hear you, please.
Um, Andrea Diedrick, um, we're just, uh, doing a bartending for, uh, a wedding there on the July ninth. We've done it in the past and it's worked well.
Thank you. Any more proponents? Uh, any opponents? Any opponents? Okay, we will close the public hearing, comments or discussion from?
Um, just for the, uh, listening public, um, all alcoholic beverage license issued by Brookings County um, are subject to a number of provisions and public hearing is one of the provisions. We've looked at the application and our office recommends approval.
Okay, further discussion?
I'd just be curious if the sheriff has anything to say.
One thing that our office is going to do, um, just a little bit different is that we are going to have, um, Andrea, we'll have you post just kind of, uh, like a sign that we've created, um, just if we, if the sheriff's office does stop out, they're able to see that you have a license, you know, it's just, it's visible, there's no questions asked and so.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, letter M. Action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-five, an application of occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Trenton Township. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These next few that you're going to consider are feeding, uh, underground into, uh, residential or farm places.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter N, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-six, an application of occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Preston Township. Is there a motion?
Motion approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter O, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-seven, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Brookings Township. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter P, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-eight, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Brookings Township.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will move back to, uh, another scheduled agenda item, um, I see our applicant is here, so this is, uh, letter C, retail on and off malt beverage and South Dakota wine, wine license for SVK Properties, still known as Midway Camp. Um, we have, this has been tabled from our May third, so I, I need a motion to remove it from the table, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have a public hearing and action to approve. Um, we had a motion, uh, by Bartley, seconded by Krogman on the, the third. Now we need to open this for public hearing. So we'll open it for public hearing for the proponents of the liquor license, proponents. Morning Todd, could you?
Good morning.
Say your name, please.
My name's Todd Voss and I own, uh, Midway Camp, um. I guess I'd just like to apologize for the, what happened and, uh, let you know that we've had some strict discussions on what needs to happen going forward. I've told them to card every single person that comes in the door, even if they have gray hair like me. And a couple of times I've stopped there and they actually carded me. Um, it's not really an excuse, but the guy that was working that night just filled in, our manager had quit on Tuesday night and it was his first night actually bartending, so. Um, I think he learned a lesson also. I guess that's.
Is there any more proponents? Round for questions, Todd?
I just.
No, go ahead. Just to sit close by there if we have questions. Um, any more proponents? Okay, any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it for just comments and discussion.
Are your staff at Midway, are they, have they completed the state training?
Some have, some have not. As you know, staff's hard to keep, so a lot of times by the time you get them certified, they move on to something different. So, we try.
I just say you realize why, uh, this was tabled before is because, uh, um, our ordinance states that you have to appear in person.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know if you guys heard, but.
Yep, yep.
No, you, we saw, yeah, we got, yeah, we had a letter from you that you were senior brother, so sorry to see about his passing. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks Todd. Alright, moving on to letter Q, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash fifty-nine, an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to provide for the striping and continuing maintenance of county roads with Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion and comments?
This will also encompass, uh, the lack of striping that we had planned from last year. They rolled the funding from last year into this year. Um, so you're gonna see a lot more of our roads get retraced this year. Um, I know we got our chip seal routes done, but we, we had a lot of roads that we were gonna retrace and that's gonna be uh, rolled in from the twenty twenty-one also. Have, uh, has the state, do they have a contractor that's gonna be able to do this or is it a paint issue or? I'm. From what I'm told, they, you know, they don't let this until June. And, uh, last year only one region in the state, uh, the Mitchell region, uh, got paint, but according to what the DOT officials have stated is the, the other regions are gonna take priority um, because there possibly could be a paint shortage.
Alright. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter R, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash sixty, a state of South Dakota joint powers financial and maintenance agreement between the Department of Transportation and Brookings County, South Dakota for project number PH zero zero one zero parentheses one fifty-seven, PCN oh six U eight on four hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue adjacent to US Highway fourteen and two twelfth Street adjacent to four hundred and eighty-sixth Avenue. Is there an action to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion.
These are rumble strips on Brookings County Road twenty-three north of Aurora and rumble strips on Brookings County thirty-five, um, or four eighty-sixth, or, yeah, four eighty-sixth Avenue just to the north of fourteen for stop signs.
So these are for stop signs?
Yeah, rumble strips for stop signs.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter S, action to approve the twenty twenty-two bridge improvement grant project, uh, BRF six three six one parentheses zero zero twenty-two dash five. Brookings County, PCN zero eight W Y letting authorization. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This was a grant Brookings County was awarded, it's, uh, for structure number zero six one fifty-two fifteen. Uh, this structure is located on Brookings County Road nineteen north of Lake Campbell. Um, we were awarded that project, uh, from the state this year as a build ready. Um, we anticipate if we advertise this for bid, this will not be, uh, constructed until next year. Due to availability of materials.
And then we redo the same route for detours similar to the, when we rehabbed that bridge that was just to the, south of that?
Yeah, we, we will not allow this to start until that bridge is completed if a contractor can get materials, but the likelihood of getting materials, um, and then I will provide a detour map, um, once we order contract.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter T, action to approve retail on and off sa- uh, sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Beach Bums, Inc., Dance Land, also known as Dance Land Campground. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Yes, this, uh, applicant, um, has an issue that they need to clear up with the Department of Revenue um, before applying for any other type of licenses, so my recommendation to you would be to, uh, deny the application and then, um, the applicant can reapply for the on-off malt beverage um, once they clear up what they need to with the Department of Revenue.
Further discussion?
Is there a waiting period if we deny versus table?
Um, so right now they haven't, um, right now there's a, there is no waiting period, no. In, in Brookings County, we can issue, um, as many malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses that you want. Um, so right now, if we deny it, um, they just won't have the license to be able to use and to operate. They do have an issue going on right now, so, uh, right now they are unable to serve even liquor. So they need to get that cleared up before, um, applying for anything else, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign?
No.
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 Motion fails. Move on then to letter U. Action to approve the purchase of trees for the courthouse grounds. Need a move, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And if you recall, we spent some money last year to have our courthouse trees cleaned up. Do some pruning, remove some trees that needed to come out and the recommendation is that we put in some additional trees. I did, um, look at Six Mile Nursery and a couple of other places and brought in, uh, a proposal, but I'm not asking for approval of this particular, uh, invoice. What I'm asking today is maybe you would authorize me to spend up to four thousand dollars for trees and, um, planting of those trees at the courthouse. What I'd like to do now that I've got an idea of what's available and, and I didn't want to wait till too far into the summer mainly because I think we're gonna have a tree shortage once everybody gets their, uh, trees removed from the storm and start planting. But, um, I'd like to walk the grounds one more time with the, the person that'll do the, the planting and make sure that we've got trees in places where the light's right. And then Stacy said she thought perhaps that the, um, maintenance people at the courthouse could water this summer so that we could get those trees started. So I, I guess what I'm asking for is authority to spend up to four thousand dollars on trees and planting trees at the courthouse. We might, once we look at our shade versus sun, swap some of these trees out for a different kind of tree.
Okay. Further discussion?
Is this, is this particular purch- purchase agreement right now specific trees? So if we pass this, are we locked into those specific trees?
I don't think you approve this specifically. I think you do what Leanne suggested, um, just approve an up two dollar amount and then we can, um, work with the experts to make sure we get the right trees in the right places, um, and get them planted, so.
This was to give us an idea of what's available. What's being recommended is that we stay away from our traditional spruce, elm, maple because of disease issues and so this is a sample of some things that are available that would put us outside of that.
Leanne, uh, would you, I, I think maybe an amendment would be helped to, uh, to clarify, so if you want to make amendment to yours there, we'll see if we can get a second?
I would make an amendment to the motion that, um, we'd be authorized to spend up to four thousand dollars for trees and installation at the courthouse.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Alright, voting on the approval as amended? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, letter V, action to approve a request for five hundred dollars for the Elkton Special Days Committee for the annual fireworks display.
Motion approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Stacy, any comments?
This is an annual request from them, this would come out of your public relations line in the commission budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter W, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for administrative assistant in the equalization office. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
This is due to a retirement.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter X, action to approve request to fill vacancy for two full-time correctional officers in the Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Comments?
This is, again, some additional correctional officers per the, uh, presentation that was held probably six weeks ago, a couple of months ago now from the sheriff's office requesting additional help with, um, now that the, the new jail is online.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carries. Letter Y, discussion and possible action to continue the Midary Township drainage study. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
There a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Comments? Bob?
Good morning. We are to the stage in the Midary Township Drainage that we're ready to start contacting the public and we got a quote from Banner's associate to continue. So all I'm doing is, is requesting, this is a, a letter of acknowledgement of acceptance. I didn't want to sign it without this board understanding. They're proposing an additional twenty-six thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. And this would be for the landowner contact and landowner meetings. They would, they would prepare their meeting materials for us. They would meet with landowners. They're estimating up to twenty landowner meetings, one hour each. And then um after all this, then we, they would prepare minutes for all the meetings. They perform, prepare a um, the documentation that, that we need. We will, our obligations would be to participate in the meetings and provide available information as needed. And um this just literally came in overnight, so we knew it was coming. We put the request in as a, as an action item, if you so, so see. And if, if you want more information, I would, would be able to send you this document and we could hear it again in the next meeting. But I just soon they start moving, moving the process alone. It's a budgeted item, it's not, I'm, I'm not asking for additional funding.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, letter Z, discussion and possible action on adding the pandemic planning and coordination financials to the emergency management budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion and comments?
Yes, sir. What I've got is in my budget line when I, we had a thing called Community Emergency Response Team. It was a budget line item of uh two-two-six-four, two-two-two, four-two-nine-four. We disbanded the, the CERT program in two thousand thirteen. And I would like to replace that particular budget line item with your permission with a, a different committee called Pandemic Planning Coordination Committee slash Points of Dispensing, using the abbreviation PPCC slash POD, POD. And what this, what this would do is it would allow us to pay all bills through the county out of that line item. Any money, I, in, in the June budget hearings next month, I do propose a twenty-twenty-three budget for this. But we would also like to add, do some paperwork we're gonna have to develop with the, with the state's attorney's office and probably the hospital's attorney's office to make sure everything's good. And then we've got some money sitting there that we could possibly put into this line item this year with your permission, of course. But uh the starting point is to get this, and what this would be is the committee and the meetings would fall under my office. The, the equipment itself and the supplies falls under the hospital because it's all medical, medical type scenario. We, and the agreement would be the hospital would maintain and keep the inventory and all that on the supply issue. I'd maintain the, the register and maintain the meetings and that, and we work as a, as a joint team. Actually, the Pandemic Planning Coordination Committee slash POD is made up of South Dakota State University, City of Brookings, Brookings County and the American Red Cross. That's the four originating parties in, in the thing. And this basically would make Brookings County as the, the lead for the meetings and the hospital the lead for the equipment. And we'd still include the American Red Cross and, and the South Dakota State University as partners in, in the group. We're not trying to shove anybody out the door. We just want to be able to, and, and part of this is I'd, I'd like the committee to be allowed to do similar to what my planning and zoning committee does. If we have a meeting, we're allowed to provide water and cookies or some kind of light, light refreshments.
Does this include facility rent and what else is included?
Well, we, at, at this time, we have no facility rent. What would happen is if we have a pand- if we have a, a need for a facility, then that would very well come out of this. But in, in the past, we have been able to use facilities because of the partnership with the whole community. We haven't, so far we haven't had to pay rent. It may come to that, of course, but, and that's why the big thing is we don't want this committee to fall apart. We don't want it to, to stop meeting and all of a sudden people stop coming to the meetings. We feel it's a strong organization. I, I sent you a report on April twenty-eighth. You know, it's been around since March ninth, two thousand six was the first, first pandemic influenza summit. And then Bob McGrath and Jan Klyts from Brookings area was, was the driving force in the beginning. And once, once Jan left, Louise Cool took over basically her spot. And then once Bob McGrath left, they, that left me never feeling his, his shoes, but falling into place on, on what he, he was able to do.
I agree, it's a very valuable committee and uh a lot of people are very thankful that we had the points of dispensing, so.
And, and we may never see another pandemic shot clinic again. And then again, there may be some, some other flu or something like that. And typically what would happen in the past, we would, we would have, uh, the, the state would offer flu shots to a certain population and we'd set up the POD and, and work as a group and, and administer those shots as, as part of the exercise. And of course, it, it technically falls under the Department of Health for funding. If we can get some grants, we may very well get the grants. And of course, that would be put into this line item. And hopefully the county commission would agree that if, if we get a Department of Health grant for the, for the POD or the PPCC, that we're allowed to expend the money towards that.
So Bob, I thought you came sometime in the last couple of months and said this group was going to form uh some kind of entity of its own. I can't remember what it was.
We tried that, ma'am.
Okay, so what happened?
It caused like a thousand dollars to go five oh one C three and, and all, that would be a standalone entity.
Okay, so the group is not going to be a standalone entity?
No.
Okay, so that, that's changed.
The, correct. That, that in, the entity would fall under us. And the only other requirement that I didn't mention in here would be the workman's comp. They would fall, anyone that doesn't already have workman's comp through the, through the, the workplace, like the retiree side of the house. We'd have to submit a list every year similar to my storm spotting list to the county commission and cover them under Brookings County workman's comp.
So in the, in the past, I always had the impression that you ran this group, okay?
No.
Because you organized meetings and did everything. How will, how will this be different other than we'll have a line item in our budget?
That's, 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 that's that's the only difference. Any money that comes in will be funneled into that line item and then this, this county commission would have to approve whatever expenditures we make through the
And grant monies that have come in in the past that
That was always done through the, through the hospital.
Okay, that's always gone through the hospital?
Now the hos- the hospital doesn't want to deal with any workman's comp issues with non-hospital employees. And we have no issue with that because of the way that we, we work with volunteers.
I think it's appropriate that it go underneath the county at this particular point in time rather than the hospital anyway, so I think it's, it's a good move.
That's our workers' comp volunteer list? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. And it wouldn't be the whole, I got eighty, eighty-six volunteers. It wouldn't be all of them on the list. It would be the ones that's not covered by workman's comp on them in a different, like any, anybody from Brookings County is already covered under workman's comp. So I don't need to re, repay for them.
But what we're, but what we're saying is that, say we had another POD, right? And any volunteer that came out would be covered by our workers' comp volunteer policy?
If the name is submitted to the county commission and approved.
Is that an issue that we need to discuss with our workers' comp insurer?
We already ran this past them and that's how they said that we would have to handle it. Is that anybody that eat, that the commission would want to cover with our work comp would be, have to be listed in the minutes? Just as we do now for the RSOs out of the BCOAC and our storm spotters. So um there's a fee for that, but it's pretty minimal.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Letter double A, discussion and possible action on waiving building permit fees for buildings damaged from the May twelfth, twenty-twenty-two storm event. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Okay, discussion, comments?
We took a lot of damage and the majority of the damage is gonna be outbuildings. I don't have an exact total from Department of Equalization yet. They're the ones going out and, and doing a lot on it. It, uh, back in two thousand two, we had a, um, F-zero tornado come through Sinai and snaked all throughout the county, actually all the way over to Elkton. And um back then we waived the building permit fees. That was a localized incident and, and not massive. This is a massive disaster. I've got reports all the way from, from Lake Hendricks Township all the way down to Sinai. So I guess we're looking for guidance from the county commission on
Comments?
Can you make a guess as to what dollar amount total we're talking about?
Well, I've heard there's over a million dollars worth of damage.
So if we had a million dollars in buildings, how much would the building permit fees be?
Probably about, um, I guess I, I, I don't have my figures in front of me, but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Up, up to that, depending on this kind, type of building. A typical, a fifty thousand dollar pole barn is gonna cost you one hundred and forty-eight dollars for a permit. So I guess the only, and I don't know where the million dollar came from. I don't know what type of building. Some buildings are inspected, some buildings are not. Our biggest fear is if we give free building permits, we can't very well expect our building inspector who's a contractor to go out and inspect everything free. So there's, there's gonna be a cost, no matter what, to a person getting a building permit. Because the inspection fees I can't waive, I, unless the county commission wants to pay those, is the only way I'd be able to waive those. And uh
But even if we waive fees, you still have to have a building there?
Yes, to, to rebuild. And that allows us to maintain, you know, I, I don't know the condition of the buildings that went down, but typically a building built under the modern building codes go up to ninety mile an hour winds. Of course, there's predicted, it was predicted it would have been a hundred and ten mile an hour winds in the storm. So that, that could have brought some of them down. And it's gonna range anywhere from your barns to your grain bins and everything else.
Some of the, some of these, they had a building permit a year ago and built them and now they're gonna have to rebuild. But you want to still keep the integrity of having them rebuilt to your
To, to the building codes, yes.
To the codes, correct.
Yep.
Does this, this do all building permits? So if, even if somebody didn't have damage?
No, no, this would be dan- this would be storm related.
Storm related that they
They come in my office and they say, I got a building down and I pull my nice little assessment list from two-one-one up. And they're not on the list, then they'd have to do some, some heavy talking to me or my office on, on why, why didn't they report it? That's one of the important reasons to use two-one-one to let us know that you've got damage. That and equalization, obviously if equalization goes out and gives me a list of a building damaged by the storm, I, I, I would go by that.
Why don't we talk a million dollars worth of damage right now? And the number of people and visitors you're gonna have in your office to request these permits, obviously do you have enough staff to handle that? Because I assume you're gonna hit the wall pretty soon here with requests.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, once, once, once they get all the trees out, they're gonna start coming back in and start building. And once they contact their insurance and everything else, you know, obviously if it's a, if it's a person that can afford it, they won't need the break, but we've got a lot of people out there. I'm, I'm thinking that it's taking some damage that's gonna need, need whatever help they can get.
I guess I'm just trying to look at the process here. They're still gonna have to fill out a complete application for a building permit. Your office will take that and have to process it. And then traditionally, we have an inspector go out after the project is completed and make sure, as Commissioner Jensen had mentioned, that meets our codes.
And that would have to still, still occur, but if they've got a building permit like Commissioner Jensen mentioned a, a year ago, we would have a copy of that on file. We could just pull that and replicate that pretty fast.
Okay, on, on some of them, you'll have those on file so you could duplicate.
But the big thing is gonna be
My question is, the two hundred and fifty thousand you're estimating on a million dollars worth of damage uh is not an additional cost necessarily to the county, which I don't know how you would inspect a million dollars worth of damage in a real timely fashion. Uh, you have one inspector, Richard, right? Or how many, you, no, you have another guy that does inspections, right?
Yeah, we've, we've got a contractor inspector, but the, the damage that was assessed was done by, by two, calling in two-one-one and calling the
Yeah, I'm not worried about the
And all that, it's not my office
I'm just worried about if we waive the permit fee and we say we're not gonna go out and inspect the properties.
No.
You know, then we've got a little bit of an issue with, are they built, rebuilt back to code?
Then we'd have the liability, yeah.
Did they build it differently than they had before? Which I don't care as long as they described that in the permit. But if we're not gonna check it like we do all permits, that concerns me just a little bit. I still think, you know, it's, it's an expense, obviously, and that's an expense to the county, but it's also to the personnel. Does one inspector that you have on a contract able to handle this in a timely fashion? I guess it, it's uh, I'll, I'll equate it to an electrical expansion, inspection ahead of my garage that was a year and a half late. So, you know, is that an issue that we take it over a longer period of time for the inspections and we still cover it?
I, I'm thinking, I haven't talked to the inspector, but I don't think that would be an issue. And if it's something where we needed to get another inspector in, that's something we could possibly look at also. We've, we've never had to use two inspectors at one time.
I guess what I would like to do today is, is approve waiving the permit fees on the storm damaged buildings and permits. And then have an additional discussion when we figure out exactly how we would handle those inspections. And yeah, obviously not in the permit fee because there isn't any, but how we would handle it as a county expense.
Because I mean, during, it's more than one trip, they, they go during construction also.
Yeah, depending on the type of the building, if it's a, if it's a pole barn, it's one inspection after it's done. And we, we're thinking a lot of these would be the ag, ag buildings. So that'd be one inspection, which would be a hundred dollars per, per permit for, for an ag type building. But if it's one of them large dairy buildings that's totally destroyed, that takes at least three inspections. And of course, if it's a residence that requires any structural, that's at least two, if not three inspections. You know, we're not talking brand new, I, well, at least I don't, I haven't heard of a brand new house being totally destroyed, but then there's three inspections on a new house.
Sure. I guess by, again, my point is, is we, we could take time to establish what it'll cost us to go out and do those inspections.
Well, what we would do is issue the permits, no cost, and the inspection fee, they'd still have to be inspected and then we'll have to figure out how to pay the inspector.
County will just have to figure out how we're gonna do it because I don't want uninspected buildings out there, to be honest with you.
That would be, that would be bad business.
Bob, um, do, do you think we need a, a time limit for something like this?
Yeah, most, most definitely. I mean, if, if not, in two thousand two, I still had people coming in like two thousand five and two thousand six wanting, wanting to do it. So no, you need to put a time limit, either twelve months or eighteen months, and that's the deadline.
But I mean, there's
Would be my recommendation.
There's some guys I've heard already that overhead door, they're waiting till September, October, even get an overhead door put in. So I mean
But we can get the permit, you know, applying for the permit, you know, within twelve months, even if it takes another couple of years to build.
And whatever deadline, either twelve months or eighteen months, whichever one you want to put on it, that's fine as long as they've applied for the permit. By the end of that, if we need to extend one for like the inspection time, then we could, we could extend, extend that.
And maybe, maybe what we would do is say that permit, permits applied for on or before December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three for damage related to the storm.
That's what I was thinking too, so. All right, so um I, I think we, offering amendment to that would be good to put a time limit on it. I don't know, Commissioner Pierce, you wanna do that?
I would move to amend the motion to read that we would waive building permit fees for damage caused by the storm as long as the application for the permit is filed on or before December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? But just to make sure everybody understands that it's not, just because there's no fee doesn't mean you, you don't need a building permit, so.
And, and if the building is not related and that isn't damage due to storm damage, it's gonna cost you to get a building permit if you come to the, to the office.
Okay. Uh, all in favor on the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Most amendment carries. Back to the original action as amended? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, letters double Bs, Brookings County Grants Policy. Um, first we have this on a table, so we need an action to remove it from the table. Is there a motion to remove?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carries. It's off the table. Now we have action to approve the Brookings County Grants Policy. There was a motion made by Bartley and seconded by Krogman on May third. Comments and discussion?
I updated the language. I think we needed just, you know, stronger wording that all grants need to come to the commission prior to approval. So I added, um, no grant application may be submitted or grant dollars received without commission approval. That was the new addition, the, the policy.
All right. Other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Motion carries. Letter CC, Oprah Approval of Detention Center Inmate Housing Contract Language. Uh, there was consensus to approve the contract. Any discussion or comments on that?
We just plugged in the changes. Uh, the Assurance Alliance has also looked at it.
We just plugged in the changes. Uh, the Assurance Alliance has also looked at it. Uh, so I think we're ready for approval.
So is this an action item then? I just, it doesn't say an action.
I don't think it needs official action. I think if there's a consensus, I mean, the action will come when we actually have a county to sign this contract. I think it was just, there's been so much discussion about the wording of the contract that I think it was brought forward to make sure that the co, commission is now comfortable with the language of the contract. Action will come when we have counties that sign up. With Marty, it's my understanding.
I have no objection.
Consensus, we're good?
Sheriff was okay with it?
If you're okay, I'm okay.
Alright.
Do you have some completed, ready to submit already, or do you have some committed and gonna submit already, or?
I will, like, I can't find female representatives.
Alright, number nine, Commission Department Director's Report. Stacy.
Our veterans for both March and April were included with my report. You can see them there. Um, we did, the day after the storm, um, I was working with Chairperson Borsma to get our emergency resolution in place. Zoom in here. And I, I handed that out this morning so that you. Sorry, I'm zooming in on that. But that was done, um, right away after the storm to get that process moving forward. So I just wanted you to have a chance to see that. And then, um, back to my, back to my report with the, the approval of the union contracts and those LOUs, um, earlier here in the meeting. Um, we'll be making a July one pay plan adjustment for all employees. With Commissioner Borsma being absent this week, we're gonna wait to officially make that pay plan adjustment at the next meeting. So what I will be, what you will see is an amending resolution to our official pay plan resolution that was adopted, I believe, back in December of twenty-one for this year. So, um, if anyone has any questions or if department heads are listening and want to reach out to me after the meeting, feel free. But I, I just needed some time to, um, adjust or to draft that pay plan resolution. And then also action to approve those LOUs was needed as well before we, we, um, approved it for the full, for the full county, for full county staff. So, um, I'll be working that, on that here in the next couple of weeks. Um, no official date set yet, but I'll be working with Marty and Dave Beitler, our jail administrator, to get a, uh, open house for phase two of the jail project scheduled. Probably looking at the end of June, we wanna make sure everything's buttoned up and that the, um, punch list has been complete and whatnot. And we're, we're comfortable with moving forward. So kind of keep that on your radar, that we'll be setting a date here shortly. I did provide you some pictures along with my staff report. Nancy Stewart with the Daughters of the American Revolution provided, um, some photos of out at the Mederi Monument that they installed a bench out there. And I have actually was out there with, um, with Todd Eversen with safety benefits to take a look at the monument, um, last week. And that bench looks really, really nice out there. So, um, she had just provided, uh, some of those pictures. The last thing, Sean's already out here. He, we're gonna discuss, um, a, a flyover, pictometry flyover after the storm event. So I'll have, let Sean give his spiel.
So earlier this, oh no, it's only Tuesday, last week, I was contacted by BMU asking about a supplemental flyover to assess the damage in, um, in Brookings. Their main concern is in the three mile joint jurisdiction area because that's where the majority of their infrastructure that may have sustained some damage was. I have since spoke to the city of Brookings and also our, our GIS person, Brandon. And we, eh, and it, it seems that there is some interest in it. I have also talked to Bob who expressed that there, there would be some value to them. And I also spoke with Brian who unfortunately the, the areas that we'd be looking at wouldn't really provide much benefit to the highway department. Looking at price, we are getting a deal, but that doesn't justify the expenditure if it isn't worth it to the county. We're looking at between seventy-two and seventy-five square miles of basically area that would be re-flown over at the resolution that, the, the higher resolution that we pay for, um, every three years. The total price for this, if we went with seventy-five miles would be about fifteen thousand dollars. If we went with the minimum, which is the city of Brookings plus the joint jurisdiction area, uh, is seventy-two square miles, would be fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. We pay about two hundred dollars per square mile. If we were to look at doing the entire county, it is completely unreasonable and far too much. It, we're not going to spend over a hundred thousand dollars for something that we literally had done earlier this year.
That was my question. They did a fly, did they complete the flyover?
They, they completed the flyover, uh, this spring, so we have that latest pictometry. It is actually up on Beacon now, um, with the twenty twenty-two imagery. It, it would just be, a, and this is something where if, if we decided we weren't interested in participating, I would still give it to BMU and the city to see if that was something that they'd be interested in doing on their own. Obviously with fewer entities, the split becomes more expensive. But that's, i- if we don't get a benefit from it, if the county doesn't get a benefit, there, there isn't too much of a reason to really do it.
Normally we do a split with BMU, city.
And E nine one one.
And E nine ones. And so are they asking that we would do that same split for this fifteen thousand dollars if we decided to? Is that?
Um, I, that's what I'm hoping for. Initially, we were looking at around fifty-two square miles, which would, which put it at, uh, ten thousand four hundred dollars. The recent, eh, the recent joint jurisdiction area went out to seventy-two square miles, which is why we're looking at almost fifteen thousand dollars. We were looking at adding potentially a couple other areas, Sinai and, uh, Bruce to get a look at the shops that were damaged and the, and, uh, well, in, in the surrounding area in those towns. But unfortunately, the information we're going to get from that isn't really going to be valuable to the highway department. Most of the valuable pictures they're going to get are going to be from the ground.
Are you saying fifteen thousand dollars is what our cost would be?
That would be the total price.
That'd be the total. So we'd pay a portion of the fifteen thousand.
Yep, if the other entities were willing to participate. BMU is almost certainly willing. I haven't heard from the city about their interest. I, I spoke to their GIS person and they pa, he passed it on to Mr. Struck, who then passed it on to, uh, City Administrator Brizino.
So who is it that asked us to do the flyover?
Uh, I don't remember his name. A, a engineering person with BMU.
What's the timeframe for this flyover? When would they do it? I mean, most of the damage is gonna be cleaned up, I would assume.
So the company is currently flying over McCook County, so they have a plane in the area. So time is important. I, if we decide to wait a couple of weeks, the plane will no longer be in the area. And then we're looking at the cost of a redeployment and a bunch of other stuff. So it's, it's either a, a do it now or, or don't do it, unfortunately.
What's our advantage to having aerial photos versus people that are doing ground photos? Is there an advantage to equalization to say this building wasn't there in our last picture and it was there and now it's not there in the new picture?
Well, a, and we're still going to be able to see that because we have the imagery from earlier this spring. So if there's a building there in spring twenty twenty-two and it, it is no longer there now, um, that, that's going to be pretty obvious. The, there is some value to looking at infrastructure damage, uh, but beyond that, I, I'm not well versed enough in the utilization of GIS to confidently say that we're going to get X benefit out of it, I guess.
I, I just think that, um, if we're going to do our normal split of the cost, we're not talking that big of a dollar and we ought to participate in that because even though, um, the city or BMU will receive maybe more benefit than the county will. Of course, the people that live in the city of Brookings also live in Brookings County, and I think we should participate in it from that perspective. And we're not talking about if we're doing our regular split, but if one of those other entities, I'm not sure about E nine one one. But if either the city or BMU doesn't want to participate in the cost, then I don't see a reason why we would do that.
I, I have not talked to E nine one one about it. They are normally the fourth participant. In this, this split, I, I don't know who the point of contact would be there, nor do I know if it's something that they would really be interested in.
They don't have a meeting scheduled for quite a while.
We just met to do budgets.
Last week.
And that was it. But, uh, we've, our next meeting isn't till Ju, Ju, July. So we're not, that, that E nine one one probably not gonna be able to. My guess is it's gonna be the three entity, three other entities that are probably going to, uh, you know, share the cost in this if we want to.
Yep.
So this is obviously not on the agenda.
No.
We'd have to get a consensus to move forward and then put it on the other agenda for approval down the road.
A, and the way this would, eh, once I get, um, but i- if you guys give the consensus to move forward and I hear from the city that they're willing to participate at their anticipated one-third cost and BMU is willing to participate at their estimated cost, um, most likely I would, I would have to contact the company immediately to get them to basically line up the plane to fly over here.
What you'd probably be approving is the claim for paying for it because we won't have time to wait until June ninth for the commission to approve doing the project because at that point the plane is no longer in the area, then it's gonna cost exponentially more to, to get them back here.
Normally in the past, we've paid three hundred and sixty dollars per square mile. Where, because the plane is already deployed, we're looking at two hundred dollars per square mile.
Everybody okay then? Consensus to, I guess what I would say this is if the other two are willing, we'd be willing. If the other two decide not to, then I think, you know, the benefit is more for them. We'll play, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and do our part, but they're not interested. I don't think we would be.
And we're talking about the fifteen thousand divided by three.
Yep.
Um, i- is that, so fifteen thousand does include, um, Sinai and Bruce? So do you want that?
Well, we would just split whatever they fly three ways.
Yeah.
If it's ten thousand and it's thirty-five hundred approximately a piece or something, I, you know, again, it's whatever the bill is, we'll split it.
Okay.
So I don't know if, if Brian's not interested in Sinai or Bruce, then I would take it out.
Okay.
Whatever the cost is, is just splitting it three ways. They have to approve splitting it three ways. And the other thing I think that needs to happen is you need to let all three entities know when the flyover is gonna happen. Cause if it all of a sudden is, well, we're not done in McCook County for five more days, it really becomes less value to us. Most of it's gonna be cleaned up.
Yep, and, uh, I, I believe they were planning on finishing McCook County over this past weekend. Uh, but I, I will visit with the, our, our representative to ensure that.
To me, the value of this is the immediate.
Yep.
Reaction to getting a plane to fly. If it's not quick, then it, the value starts to drop off pretty rapidly.
Yep, I understand.
Alright, I think we're good.
Okay.
The only other thing that I had is just your upcoming dates. Um, offices are closed on Monday with the Memorial Day holiday. There's an employee appreciation celebration on June sixth out at the BCOAC from eleven to two. I'd be hearing some more about that. Otherwise, the only other thing that was an addition, um, that we got from Dustin, and it was part of his report as well, but June twentieth at five thirty PM is the BCOAC Volunteer Appreciation Night. If you want to attend, attend that event, um, let Dustin know because he'll be ordering food and needs a, kind of, he needs a head count. So, um, please let him know of that. Otherwise, that is all I have.
State's Attorney, Dan.
Nothing to report.
Alright. Uh, Levin, his commissioner reports. Commissioner Pierce, would you like to start?
I would. On May sixth, I attended the, our special commission meeting for contract negotiations. Um, and then I left to go on vacation and the whole county blew up, so I came back home. Anyway, other than that, so I don't have a whole lot to report. I've been working on the courthouse tree project. And I did work some with Lori and Jenna on our, um, ballots for publication. And those, I think Jenna said will be published countywide on June first. So that's all I have to report.
Alright. Commissioner Bartley.
Okay, on the third, the planning commission met and we approved those today. Seventeenth, I attended the Optimist Law Enforcement Breakfast. It was well attended. It had a lot of people there and it was a great award for, uh, uh, can't remember her name now. Dan?
Lynn Kramer.
Lynn Kramer's award, uh, for the Law Enforcement Official of the Year. And then, uh, so more around the storm, I, I helped Bob out with the Red Cross trailer a little bit. On the nineteenth, we had a jail meeting and everything's on, on schedule. They're optimistic. They're gonna finish on time. And if I looked at it, I wouldn't have said that, but, uh, they got a lot of people in there, a lot of bodies working. So I'm anticipating that they will be on time. On the, uh, just as a, a notice, June thirteenth, the planning commission will meet again on, that's a Monday night for a comp plan review. That might be of interest to the people. That's a couple of weeks away, but we don't, uh, we have a meeting on the Thursday before because of the election before that. So, uh, that'll be a joint meeting with the city planning commission. That's my report.
Mr. Jensen.
I also can, uh, negotiations, uh, participated with that. Breaking for the twentieth street overpass, uh, it was, uh, started out our storm events, but we got good rain that day and it was moved to the Daktronics and it was well attended. Thank you to Daktronics for hosting that, uh, at a short notice and they did a good job of, uh, presenting everything. On the twelfth was the storm, uh, and then thirteenth, uh, at the, I was at the Emergency Operations Center for a little bit that morning. On the sixteenth, um, headed to the NACO conference in Alaska on Monday. Uh, had the opportunity to sit by, uh, Dusty Johnson on the way. Main to, topic was, uh, the infrastructure money that'd be coming towards the states. Um, so there'll be a lot of money. Like to see it spent. Um, encouraged, uh, uh, we talked a little bit. So I asked about bridge builders and such being in shortage. Um, encouraged, uh, if possible, the larger culverts, box culverts and, and different applications, uh, to improve our roadways. On, um, Tuesday, um, participated in a tour, uh, started in Anchorage. It was a, up to C word, um, small community up there. Basically went to all their departments within the small town. One of the big deals they'd had there was an avalanche a week, well, about three days before we got there. And there's a small community or borough just south there, about two miles, and an avalanche had occurred. The avalanche was about four hundred feet long on this roadway and about four hundred feet deep. Uh, they'd been working three days with two large excavators and, uh, they had about half done, they figured. They had somewhat of an. they had about half done, they figured. Um, they had somewhat of an emergency. They had obtained permits from the state. Uh, they obtained all those. Uh, one of the local, barge operators, they were hauling vehicles from that community to C word and people were having to take their boats to C word to get to work. So it was quite the deal. A lot of, a lot of community work with the city, the state and everybody working together there. But, um, also they had a, a large project, um, that their governor secured for them. They were requesting 10 million and it was a process in a place to divert some water, uh, that yearly would flow through this one small tunnel and cause damage to a bridge. And, uh, the governor secured them 185 million to complete this project. The project, uh, is to be completed within the next two years and they're going to put a larger tunnel in. And so, uh, basically, uh, securing that this, uh, other road doesn't overflow and damage the small town. But that was, uh, pretty neat to see. Um, we toured, basically the whole town, the port where the ships come in, they're doing, uh, they received some grants to upgrade the port. Um, they realized in the last two years how important that, uh, the cargo coming in, uh, if the ships don't show up or whatever, if within three, four days, you start noticing in the, in the stores immediately. Uh, they were in short supply and basically they're trying to be more self-sufficient, uh, themselves. On, uh, Wednesday, uh, basically had a, a business meeting right away in the morning, very well attended. Uh, room was overflowing and, uh, they were really impressed with all the people that had showed up. Um, in short, uh, we went to, eh, on Wednesday afternoon, we went, uh, toured the Matunuska Experimental Farm and Extension Center. Uh, it's very interesting. It's somewhat like SDSU. It's, it's state owned. Um, like I've said, they're trying to be more self-sufficient. Um, they're, they have, uh, developed over a hundred different varieties of potatoes that grow in that area. They're working on developing a, uh, an alfalfa that would be able to survive the, the weather up there and the frost. And, uh, they've hit a lot of different, a lot of different things. Uh, and they've, uh, invasive species, they have those up there also. Uh, they've done some work on a couple lakes up there and invested 2 million in these two lakes to just take care of invasive species. Um, like they said, they, they're promoting local, um, trying to get more people involved. They've also, the state has, uh, um, purchased, uh, from the federal government. They purchased, um, 100,000 acres to be, uh, sold as in 100 acre tracts, uh, to people interested in farming. Uh, it was interesting that, uh, the cost would be $400 an acre. Uh, the big cost was it costs you about $3,000 an acre to clear the trees off it to be able to, uh, to farm the, the area. But, uh, they're trying to promote production in there. Um, next day there was another meeting, uh, a lot of, a lot of things to preserve the clean water, infrastructure, protection from wildland, wildland fires, um, and just basically promote a safe and healthy communities. Um, also was interesting, uh, Alaska, 9% of their population are veterans also. And, um, we had a work, also had a workshop, uh, inflammation, the inflammation of the 988 suicide lifeline, uh, very important up in their area. Um, they really had a counselor. They, he was basically, his title is a deep bush counselor. Um, this is the areas where there's, uh, basically, uh, no roads, um, travels either by snow machine or airplane. And, uh, basically some parts of the year up there, uh, it gets below 40 degrees, uh, snow machines can't go any longer. And if it gets down to 60 below, airplanes are not flying. So, um, they rely on, uh, local people to be able to counsel these people and, uh, they're hoping this 988 suicide lifeline, if they have cell service, they can, uh, get called, call in. Uh, and that's one thing that's really impressed me throughout the whole time up there. My phone worked great. I don't understand it out in the middle. Nowhere in your phone works super. Uh, but, uh, also, uh, with being self-sufficient, there was three universities up there. Uh, each university, uh, have Vortex that are actually attached to the, the university. There was 13 Vortex in the area and, uh, they're, they're focused on the communities that they serve, uh, from, uh, maintenance on, uh, large boats to alternative energy to, uh, just a lot of different, uh, things that, uh, to work within the community. Applying for a lot of grants, uh, up in the area also. Um, on Thursday, I attended a workshop. It was interesting on, uh, it was an election workshop and, uh, toured their, uh, facility there in Anchorage, which is, uh, the main, the main place in Alaska. And, uh, they do mail-in voting there. And it was interesting. They sent out 210,000 ballots were sent out. Uh, of those 210 ballots, they're sent out to every registered voter. Um, 18,000 were not undeliverable, which was, I can see where that could happen. Uh, they had, have improved their voter turnout from around 20% to close to 30%. And, uh, they basically have, uh, these large boxes that are, uh, cemented to a large piece of concrete and putting it throughout the communities, the small communities. And, uh, they start picking those up, uh, somewhat like our early voting. But, uh, they're distributed out throughout the whole territory. Um, and their voter, uh, validation is basically on your signature. Uh, so that's how that went. Uh, we toured the building. It was interesting. It, uh, it just, uh, looked like a large warehouse to me. Um, there was a few cages with, uh, locks on their computers and all the wiring was self-contained within the building, um, showing where the wires went. It was a security measure. There's, uh, uh, nowhere each wire went. And it basically, uh, the public is welcome to enter that building. There is a viewing area just similar to what we have. And we toured that facility. Other, um, meeting I did attend was a closing meeting and, uh, one of the deals was, uh, by a conservation district, it's just national resource conservation, uh, promoting salmon habitat, soil health, uh, flood prevention, watershed protection. Uh, and, uh, there's also, um, a grant out there. They're moving some, some of the, a lot of the homes were built in flood plains and they're actually a grant out there now that they're moving the houses out of the flood plains, uh, to a more favorable area. And, uh, that was it. Then it took me about two days to get home. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
And one of, uh, um, attendees throughout, uh, throughout the US from Hawaii, you name it, uh, everywhere, um, they really did like our governor. The majority of the people said, uh, but, uh, it was, it was well attended and, uh, it was informational.
All right. Well, um, my couple of weeks were groundbreaking at Daktronics. It was a quick, quick move there for the downpour. And then on the 13th, I met with Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner Borsma and, and Bob Hill at the East Fire Station there. Um, we were able to keep that going with the generator that Bob's, Bob has there. And so we had electricity and we had systems. The city opened up a call line, which they then also took county calls. So it, uh, we got there early in the morning and they were up and running early and it went really well, I think. The collaboration was very good. The communication was good, being in the same place. Uh, appreciate all of Bob's work and his time there. He spent a lot of time there coordinating everything. And obviously the highway department and all of our county employees did a really good job. So, uh, was there in the morning and then cleaning up my own stuff after that in the afternoon. But then on the 17th, um, went to the appreciation for law enforcement breakfast and Lynn Kramer received her award, well deserved. Uh, the 19th, we had a E911 budget meeting. Um, and, uh, and we didn't finalize it. We're going to finalize it the next meeting. We had some discretion, discrepancies in that, but, uh, there is, uh, we have a rule or a, I don't know what you call it, ordinance or a policy that we need to have at least $30,000 in our reserves for the E911. And we were falling below that with expenses that we have. And so, uh, our costs, our portion of the cost will probably go up this next budget to replenish that to get to that $30,000 level. So you'll probably see that. Um, we just, we're waiting for the numbers of what our portion is and what the city's portion is. So that was, had to be figured out yet. And so we'll be passing that budget, I'm guessing, next meeting in July. I stuff too for that. So, and then had the BCOAC meeting, um, yesterday and, uh, numbers are, are good. They're, it's going to slow down now because of summer. People are going to be, you know, shooting, uh, their bows outdoors now and, uh, going to the outdoor, uh, ranges, which is certainly good. But, uh, numbers have been very good and we're continuing to, uh, keep, uh, um, keep up with maintenance. Uh, Arden made a comment that, uh, a lot of the people that are coming to shoot in the gun range really enjoy it and really are appreciative of the facility, the new lighting, uh, all the improvements that we made. And he just wanted to thank the commission and the commissioners for us investing in that facility and investing in the, in the pistol range there because he says, uh, he said the people that come there just really like it and really are appreciative of how, uh, nice a facility that we do have. So he wanted to pass that on to the commission. So otherwise that's all I have. So. Last on the number 12, executive session. In accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, numbers one, four, and six, personnel, contract negotiation, and security. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll take about a five, 10 minute break to use the rest.